Begin. Until further notice, all this Public Works Committee will be held remotely. There is opportunity for the public to attend, but not to provide input. Um, thank you all for coming and let us begin with the first item on the agenda. Um, councillor Goodnow, pleased to see you. You missed during the practice session, I mentioned that councillor Younger will not be able to attend. All right, so the first item on what I hope will be a brief agenda for today is the contract modification number two with parametrics for decommissioning the beach sewer in Manette project. Mr. William Davis will present, please take it away.
Good evening, Public Works Committee. I'm going to talk about contract modification number two with parametrics or the decommissioned beach sewer in Manette project. And I want to share my screen here. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so um. This is the, this is the kind of a sister project in a way to the Oyster Bay Beach Sewer Project, but it's in Manette. We're, we're going to be putting in grinder pumps, getting rid of a sewer system on the beach between the Manette Bridge and East Sixteenth. About fifteen hundred feet of sewer, and in doing so, we're going to need to put in an upland sewer system. So. This, uh, we've had one contract modification to date. The original contract amount was four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, as shown there, and the contract was executed with parametrics back in December of twenty twenty one. Contract modification number one was for sixty seven thousand dollars and change, got us up to around four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And this latest contract modification that I'm going to be talking about is around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, it gets us up to six hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. So I'm going to talk about why. Uh, the reason why.
Built design, right?
I mean, you're. Yes, this is design.
This is, we're just talking about design right now.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's specifically, it's, this is a design contract with parametrics. So the construction is likely not going to occur until the end of this year, um, or early twenty twenty four.
It's designed, but it includes construction support services, so.
Permitting, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Design permitting, construction support services, which means seminal review and things like that when we go to construction. So it is a little bit of construction.
They'll, they'll support us cradle to grave through the contract. So. This co- this contract, um, this contract really got derailed because of, um, the big reason is cultural resources issues. We, uh, dur- early on, I'd say like May or June, our, our consultant, uh, CRC, they're actually a sub to parametrics. They put together their inadvertent discovery plan and discovered that one of the areas, one of the sites, um, uh, had human remains on it, and this was known, the city didn't know about it. But it ended up setting into emotion, setting into motion, a lot of discussions with ecology, um, several tribes. Uh, Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservations, where we had meetings, um, where several members of tribes were present. Um, and it's, it's come to the point where we've had to put together a special inadvertent discovery plan where, um, every pothole we do has to be monitored. So it's basically a step by step process from design through the rest of the project where we have to follow um, a very detailed approach as far as um, excavation, if there's a discovery that occurs, so it's really added a lot. CRC, um, the subconsultant to parametrics quit. And so they had to hire a new subconsultant, which, which through things, um, caused some chaos. So it just, uh, for that very reason, the project has been set back. And it's actually, we were planning on doing construction this year, but it's being delayed significantly, so.
CRC is the archaeologist, right?
That's correct.
They were.
They were the archaeologists.
Now it's Willamette, yeah.
Now it's Willamette CRA.
Do we know why they dropped out?
No.
They got. I don't know if it was workload and capacity, or if they, like, our, our prime consultant is parametrics, and I don't know if they had an issue with parametrics. And we just use CRC on Oyster Bay, right, Bill?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you got a sense that they got mad at us for some reason or not, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, we didn't, like, nobody knows why they quit.
Yeah, in, uh, parametrics lead permitting person quit also about the same time, a little bit after. So.
They're starting a firm.
Yeah.
Or a band.
Yeah.
Is, is that, is that your whole presentation?
No, no.
Okay, please carry on then.
No, wait, there's more.
So that's issue number one, that's issue number one. The second one is an environmental permitting that's kind of tied in with the cultural resources issues, but also, one of the, uh, one of the homes that we're going to put a grinder pump at, we have to put the grinder pump below high tide line. This person has a deck that's close to the water and there, the, um, the lower floor of the house is close to the water. So there's no way that we can put a grinder pump above the high tide line and meet this person's needs. So for that reason, it, it opens up. When, whenever you do any improvements below the high tide line, you've got to do some kind of mitigation. So we are, there are additional costs associated with preparing a mitigation plan and then changing the applications for the HPA and the Army Corps permit to reflect that there's going to be work below the high tide line. So that's been an impact. And then the last one is that we added a ninety percent review, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, so, um, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be a good chair. Uh, councillor Goodnow, do you have anything? Because I have a couple of clarifying questions.
Just go ahead, if you, I mean, I can wait.
Obviously, this deck is permitted, right? The deck in question, the obstacle deck?
It was probably permitted when it was constructed, I don't know that we've checked to see that it is or was permitted. But, but it's, this whole house is right up against, on a bulkhead, right up against the beach. And the lateral comes out because all the laterals go out to the beach, so there's a it's complicated trying to get service for this one property, basically.
Well, um. Would it be possible to find out if, in other words, would, if the deck were not there, would it be simpler?
It's, it's the floor itself, the whole lower floor is, um, and there's a bedroom down there, there's a bathroom. Is, uh, it's, it's part of the household, but there is a deck that extends out, so we have not gone up to DCD and asked and checked to see if that was permitted.
May I most respectfully request you, you do that? If, because if it would save this much money, and I know that altering an HPA is not one of those things that happens by Tuesday.
I think we're already on a path, I, I don't think whether the deck was permitted or not is going to alter our path for where we have to put the grinder pump, is that true, Bill? Like, like, we've spent a significant amount of, uh, budget trying to resolve this issue, and I think we have the solution. But it's been expensive, I think is where we're at, so changing course now will just make it more expensive than how horrendously expensive it's already been, unfortunately.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to be clear, is the extra expense because of the homeowners' request of the solution that they, like, did we have a more affordable solution? And then they didn't like it? Or just when you've got to see the property, it has to do, we have to do this, to, to, is, is, do you see what I'm saying? Is, is the.
I know what I think the answer is, but I want to hear Bill say it out loud and so that I know I'm right.
I, I, I think it's a little bit of both, you know, we try to accommodate property owners, um, in. There's a shelf down there below that we wanted to put it on, but we would have had to bolt it to put it against his bulkhead and bolted, his, his bulkhead was kind of fracturing already. So he was concerned about us trying to attach that to his bulkhead, so we accommodated, we're, we're accommodating this person. We've, we, I think we've come up with a solution that will work by putting.
Even though at some expense, you guys feel this is reasonable accommodation that we would do for any citizen, this is not like an extravagant.
This is probably one of the two most complicated locations to figure out for grinder pumps, and all of the grinder pumps that we've done. Uh, we had a similar situation over in Washington where the grinder pump ended up down on the beach. We don't, that's the last place, thing we want to do, but sometimes there's not a lot of options. So, Bill, I don't know what the other options were, but that, um, that was vetted quite a while back, and the consultant has been working on this permitting because of the tide level and, uh, the complexity of this design, like, I think we're pretty committed to it at this point. Is that fair, Bill?
It is, it is, we're pretty far along.
Yeah.
May I ask, by whom was it better?
By the technical staff, like our consultant and Bill and Michelle, uh, Philly when she was here, so.
Okay.
The project management team, basically.
So how much of this sixty, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars contract modification is caused by this one property alone? Do you?
I'm going to have to pull some numbers for you out of a, um, out of a memo that, uh, parametrics prepared, if you have a second, I can.
So, so before you do that, Bill, can you go through with the other, there were other costs?
Oh, sure.
So we're not even done going through all the costs, and I think we should circle back to this, yeah, yeah.
So. I really have one more.
Please go on.
And the, the other really significant one was that when we scoped this project, the design, we didn't include a ninety percent review. Um, we had just very recently, typically, typically projects are done on a thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred percent design review. Um, we had just completed the design and were in the process of constructing Oyster Bay Beach Sewer. So, um, we, there were a lot of lessons learned from that project, so we thought that by, um, we could take those lessons and apply them and shorten the design period and get this project done more efficiently and save some money. Um, during the course of this project, this design, we added a pump station and then, you know, with the issues with, uh, the this property, this particular property, we thought it would be beneficial to add that ninety percent design back in, just to make sure we, we got one more round of review.
So, um, we have also expended all of the management reserve, so there was a fifty thousand dollar management reserve. And when Bill says this project's derailed by, you know, the cultural resources issues, it's as derailed as I've ever seen. So, uh, we burned through the fifty thousand dollar management reserve trying to, um, respond to the co- the archaeologists that quit and, you know, appeasing the angry tribe and, and doubt that we're very upset, uh, as we were moving forward. So, uh, the management reserve has been expended and twenty thousand dollars of this, uh, contract mod is to replenish the management reserve with twenty grand, so that we, so, uh, we can, you know, address any other you know, derailments that we haven't foreseen yet. Um, so there's twenty thousand dollars for that, um, there's, uh, the ninety percent design. There's this, uh, beach work, there's been an extensive permitting, uh, expansion. The original, uh, contract amount for permitting was like thirty-seven or thirty-eight thousand dollars. This contract mod takes it over a hundred thousand dollars for the permitting effort alone, so. Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot going on here and the costs are much higher than we originally anticipated. But we did not anticipate having a site with, you know, human remains having been found historically. And we're learning a lot, I mean, it's the first time I've dealt with this extensive of an archaeology, archaeological site, so.
So, so, thank God we're finding it during design and not during construction, right? This is, this is much better than it could be if it was discovered, uh, while we're under construction.
True.
So. I'm sorry, Bill, had you finished your presentation at this point and, and the lamentation?
Yes, yes, those, those, in, I, I focused on those three points and Ned brought up another one, so, yeah, yes.
Okay, so, um. So I understand accommodating homeowners and, you know, as a property owner myself, yes, thank you. This seems like a very expensive accommodation, um. So here, I, I'm truly just asking, and I know that when people are asking you questions, it can often feel like they're going prisoner at the bar, where were you on the night of eleventh November? But I, I'm truly just asking because I don't know the answer, okay? You guys have known me for a while, so I hope that you can trust that that's what I'm doing, okay? Um, so when you first, when you all first looked at this site, the difficulties of this particular um, homeowner didn't occur to you because you had planned to bolt a shelf onto the bulkhead, is that correct?
There was a ledge, a narrow ledge down at, at the base, uh, wo- below his house, and we thought we could put it at that location. But it would have been up against his footing and his concrete footing, we would have had to bolt it, um, through his footing.
But we don't have that level of detail when we're negotiating scope and budget, like, we haven't gotten that far into a project. We, you know, we had, we, that's what management reserve is for, is to try to, you know, accommodate any kind of weirdness that we come across. And hopefully we've got enough management reserve that we've programmed into the contract to allow us to get through it without contract mods. But we don't have, we hadn't looked at that site to that level of detail before we executed this contract, so.
Hey, I don't know that, just, just, just one, one quick thing, so.
Just calling on you.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, the, uh, you know, that we're, we're, we're completely changing, um, how the, um, wastewater service in this whole area is managed, right? You're, you're having to go through each of the properties, and I don't know how many there are, but thirty, maybe, something like that. Each one of those properties is its own little design project to try to figure out, okay, what elevation, where's, where's the lateral? Where do I intercept it? Where can I put a pump station? Where can I, uh, put power? How do I get the flow up to, um, utility? Do I need to construct a new utility? So, um, I just kind of add on to what Ned said, I mean, we have kind of a general idea of what makes sense, but until you start pulling all the plans, get surveyed, go out, walk the field, you know, knock on doors, you really don't know exactly how you're going to address each of these.
Um, and they're all different, like, we might be replacing a whole electrical panel at one house and just putting in a slimline breaker at the next house, right? Like, every one of them is unique with landscaping, um, things that are like, uh, in the way, you know? Uh, so, yeah, every one of them is unique.
And as we continue.
Thank you very much for your input, but young Tom Nucky needs the practice, please go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, I, I, that's, um, they're, they're all, they're all different. Every, uh, one of these projects, all of these projects, as we go forward, um, and try to eliminate these sewers off the beach, we're going to run into these things again. I mean, um, there have been, you know, um, Native Americans that have lived in this area, you know? Um, for eons, right? And so, um, and they lived on the shoreline because that's where the food was, um, so, uh, it's just, I mean, this is part of, part of doing this type of business, I think. So.
And it's kind of one, one thing I want to add is every property owner is different, this one, this particular property owner, whenever he writes to me or I write back to him, he always CCs his attorney, um, you know, he's very concerned about, you know, what we're doing on his property.
This is probably our most challenging project right now.
Michael. You guys are all okay with first names during Public Works, right?
Yeah.
Anybody object? Okay, so, Michael, do you have anything, like?
Yeah.
And lock.
There's ju- there's just some things that even though they don't taste well, we have to, uh, we have to take our lumps and, uh, you know, um, you know. As, as, as as long as we feel like we can also justify this to the public sort of, you know, that we're not, you know, you're not putting in, uh, you know, diamond encrusted sewer laterals on my house, right, like?
They're getting the same infrastructure, it's just much more expensive when you put it on a beach instead of up in the yard. And everybody who wants a permit or needs a permit, including like the corps and fisheries and the tribe, gets much more involved when you do that. And so it just gets, um, yeah, it gets a lot more complicated.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a waterfront property owner, they.
In Manette.
Different resources than, than some, so.
Yes, I'm going to just be short there. Um, okay, um, all right, so we've had presentation lamentation, let me supply the commiseration. I'm really sorry for you guys. Um, and I'm just also checking that when DCD is issuing permits for new or any, for really any shorefront waterfront construction, that they're looking at these kinds of issues before the permit is issued, that they're making certain um, that proper sewers, proper moderns, a- almost done, Tom, the proper modern sewers are installed where you Public Works can get at them outside the fish window, please go ahead, Tom.
Well, just one thing, I'll let Bill answer the rest of it, but I mean, part of the problem that we have in this area is that, you know, um, there are setbacks that exist now that, um, that didn't exist when these properties were constructed, right?
Yeah.
If they had, if they had a, a modern setback, it'd be a lot easier, there'd be room there to install pump stations and things like that. Um, but if you, if you take a look at an aerial photo along the shoreline, I mean, these properties are as close to the water as they can be because that gives them the best view and it's the nicest place to live, right? Um, but yeah, go ahead and if you want to answer the rest of that, Bill.
Thank you, Tom, please go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I can stick a stab at it if you want, Bill.
Go ahead, Ned's got a development background.
So the answer is no, DCD doesn't, uh, do that, we do that. Uh, so when somebody comes in for a house or development, um, we've got engineering has development staff up in DCD, so maybe even engineering staff in DCD, but, um, so our engineering staff in DCD, we issue the permits for utilities, we check the site. We provide the requirements for how they connect. Um, we have a lot of beach sewers, sometimes there's no other option, uh, this project's coming in after the fact. Like, if somebody else was developing that property within, without this project being a thing, then we'd be telling them to tie into the beach sewer, unfortunately. Um, we, we're trying to get away from that, like, we're, we have beach sewers where there is an upland sewer option, and we don't allow people to connect when they have that option, Kitsap Lake is a example of that. Some of the folks in Dockside had sewers that were up in the street and they also had a lake main that went, you know, in front of their, on their beach. And so, um, we try to get ahead of it when we can, but it's basically engineering staff that reviews all of those um, projects and what their utilities requirements are, uh, when they construct, so.
Uh, Michael, do you have anything? Okay, so you're saying that if new construction or renovation were done on, um, anywhere along the shoreline, that your advice to them, and here I'm, I use you as you, the people who understand about sewage and wastewater, uh, engineering? But your advice to them would be to tie into the beach sewer?
If there's no alternative, if that property was set up to front on a beach sewer and that was the only available sewer and there wasn't a project to, you know, reasonably construct an uplands, like, we don't tell them to go build five hundred feet of gravity sewer when their project, the property was set up to be served by the beach main. Now we're trying to develop and install those upland sewers, so we get people off of the beach. And now for this project, uh, no one will ever be connected to that beach sewer again, ever. So it just depends on what, we look at each site individually and it depends on what sewer availability there is, so.
Okay. Um, I have one final follow-up question, if, unless someone else has something. So when the council, um, approved DCD's plan to amend the Shoreline Management Act as it applies to the city of Bremerton in twenty twenty, um, such that, uh, the original footprint of any structure can, they can, you know, the footprint is preserved rather than following the normal GMA, uh, requirements of the Shoreline Management Act. So should one permit come in to do a new construction following the footprint of an old building, that would be the, the recommendation to them is where sea- beach sewers are present to tie into them?
Uh, you've just pulled in DCD requirements that I don't understand, so I'm not sure I, I can answer that question correctly. Yeah, um, we, we look at the site, we look at what's available and we try not to have connections to the beach if it's possible, reasonably possible. So, um, that's our approach. And if there is an alternative like at Dockside where, hey, yeah, I know you had a lateral stubbed out from the lake main, but we're not tying into that anymore, you're going to have to put a grinder pump in and go up to the upland sewer that's available fronting your house.
Okay.
That's how we treat that. Um, does that, if that answered your question or not, though? You brought in DCD requirements I'm not familiar with and code changes, so.
So it, um. If DCD has approved construction on a shoreline and there's a beach sewer for that approved construction to tie into, that would be your recommendation?
Well, they don't, they don't approve construction until we've figured out how the utilities are going to be served. So we work to, that's part of the upfront process to approve it. So, and I, and again, it's on a case by case basis, so.
Happy as I would be to talk about sewage and shorelines because I actually find this fascinating. I feel that the, the will of the community is not with me on this, we have spent half an hour on item one. So, um, unless any of you have anything further on this one, thank you very much for the presentation.
When does this come to council, Bill?
Well. It's either going to be the, um.
Has it been scheduled?
It's either going to be the eighth of the twenty-second.
Of March?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That would study session.
Okay.
We will look forward to seeing it at that time and now. All right, Mr. Davis, can you please address your second and final agenda item? Upcoming, blah, blah, twenty twenty-three sewer rehabilitation upcoming contract award.
Okay, this one's a little bit easier. So this is our annual cure and place pipe project that we do, this is, uh, twenty twenty-three sewer rehabilitation. And this is the project that, um, uses trenchless technology, uh, in lieu of having to dig up a street and rehabilitate or replace a sewer. We, we insert that sleeve through there, belt sleeve that it's impregnated with a, with epoxy, and then we cure it using um, steam or water, and this year we're actually going to allow for UV cure. Um, a lot of municipalities are doing that. So, um, the last few years we focused on the downtown because that's where a lot of our oldest infrastructure is, and, um, this year we're going to be fo- focusing on some different areas, some, um, areas where we're going to be doing street improvements, we're trying to get in there ahead of time to do cure and place pipe on the lines as well as some pump station influence. So we've got, um, sewer, we've got some storm sewer lines that we're doing, and we're also doing some video inspection and cleaning. So, um, we're doing over eleven thousand feet this year, which is significant, that's more than we've done in the past, and the estimate for construction is around one point three million dollars, so we're going to be bidding, uh, in early March with bids opening late March and then, uh, awards sometime in April for summer construction.
Well, you said eleven thousand feet, eleven thousand feet, is that the right number?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Had you, had you finished, Bill?
Yes.
Michael, do you have any comments, questions? Okay, um, would it be possible for us to get a map of where these?
Oh, yes, you sure can, let me, let me pull it up right now.
Okay, can, can you just send it to us?
Sure, would you like me to, instead of sharing it, would you like me to email it to you?
I would, and then your presentation could be over and you could take some well-earned rest.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you. Okay, um, thank you very much, Bill, for being the person who brought the bad news from gent to aches, um, no, but appreciate that very much. All right, we have one, two, three, four, um, different agenda items from Water Division Manager Kami Appleback, beginning with the Union River Reservoir Firm Yield Update. Madam. Please take it away.
Thank you, and I, I, uh, I have all of these project updates in one, uh, presentation, so, um, feel free at the end of each project. If you want to ask some questions, stop me there, um, otherwise we can ask all the questions at the end, but I'm sure you'll probably have some questions about some of these projects, some, because I have some good news to share, uh. Uh, but we also have a, a few, uh, findings that just mean we need to do some more work on some of these other projects, so I'm sure you are going to have, um, have questions, so. And again, for, for the projects that we've completed, we do have project reports. Um, so if you want to see a copy of those, please just email me, let me know, I will provide you a copy of those, okay? Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen here to go through our. Presentations. And can everyone see that? Yes, good.
Yes.
Go to slide, no. I'd show from the beginning, okay. All right, so um, I wanted to come and share with you uh some results of, of some project work that we completed. We're doing a lot of interesting projects over in Water Resources in addition to running the system. Um, uh, and so I thought uh it definitely would be of interest to you to come and present on. Uh, for some projects that are completed, what we've discovered. Uh, and for projects that are in play, where we're at with that and what you can expect coming up in the future. So the first one I'm gonna talk about is the Union River Reservoir Firm Yield Update. So what is firm yield? Firm yield is defined as the maximum amount of water that can be released. Or relied upon from a supply even during an extreme drought. And why do we update our firm yield? Uh, we want to incorporate any additional data that we may have. Our uh initial firm yield was calculated back in nineteen ninety uh eight, so we have a considerable amount of more recent data that we wanted to. Uh, to look at specifically, we were looking for any trends that might impact. The amount of precipitation we would receive and how much of that it results as inflow to the reservoir. Um, I think you're aware by now that our reservoir is filled by rainfall. We are not a snowpack dependent. So we always are concerned about precipitation trends and how much of that actually fills our reservoir. Uh, we also had uh at a tool, of course. Moving forward thirty, forty years, we have more robust data analysis tools and calculation methods that can uh significantly increase our confidence. In the numbers that we derive, so we wanted to do that. And also this time we, we uh wanted to look at climate change impacts. Um, that might be projected for how it would impact again rainfall and, and our ability to fill our reservoir, right? Uh, so we included that this time around. So here are some of the findings.
So this is the update since nineteen ninety-nine?
This is an update, yes. From now on, we'll be doing this about every ten years. Just so you know, so.
Thank you.
But uh, so as far as any observable trends in the, in the data record. Um, we did not find any statistically significant trends in uh precipitation. And now we're looking at, not in the future at this point, we're looking at so far in the data that we've collected, we've not determined. Um, any significant trends up or down or otherwise. Um, uh, we confirm, other than the, the one I'll share here at the end, but we've also as part of that confirmed that. There is no influence from the Pacific Decadal Oscillation and Oceanic uh Nino Index. So when you hear about La Nina years and love, you know, and, and is that gonna impact. Our, our ability to fill the reservoir, the data does not suggest that there's an influence on that. So it was good, the, the original assessment had that finding as well, so it's good to have a confirmation that again, we're not seeing any influence from. The changes going on out in the ocean, so that's good. Um, there was no trend in total annual or wet season inflow into the reservoir. We did see a very small decreasing trend. In, in the dry season inflow, so I think that's probably not surprising to you. You've probably intuitively have noticed that summers are. Are tend, tend to be drier now um and warmer, so we are seeing very small trend of inflow during the summertime. Of, of about uh two hundred and ten thousand mil, um gallons annually. Um, it's very small relative to the total.
So that's negative point two one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a decreasing trend, so you'll see less. Uh, it's very, very small relative to the whole, but that's the only trend that appears statistically significant. Looking at the total firm yield available on an annual basis, the comparison to the initial, the initial calculated. Uh, and this, by the way, does not include any contribution from West Branch or, or inflows downstream of the dam. We're just looking at what's coming into the reservoir. Uh, so initially, um, they calculated uh seventeen hundred and twenty million gallons annually. The updated calculated seventeen hundred and eighty, so very good agreement. Um, which we were, we were happy about that. Um, and uh, we feel even better about it now because the more robust dataset and analytical method resulted in higher confidence in that number. Going forward. So that was good news. And then looking at climate change uh projections, what we would intent anticipate may or may not impact us. Some good news here, even though uh, you know, on average, they're expecting to see temperature increases of about two degrees centigrade by twenty forty. Three to four degrees centigrade by twenty eighty, um, which will increase evapotranspiration. Um, the increases in precipitation were slightly higher than increases in evapotranspiration, so there's. Projected to be a very slight increase in runoff uh from the watershed to the reservoir despite that. Um, and I don't know if you can see this, get this out of the way. Um, it says it could result in a hundred to three hundred million gallons annually increase. Now, keep in mind, this, these are models, right? Model projections. Um, I think what you should focus on here is it doesn't, at this point, we don't see. Uh, any serious impacts of, from climate change to our ability to get the rainfall we need and fill our reservoir. So that's good news. And I'll stop there in case you have any specific questions you would like to ask before I move on.
Michael, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, so can you go back one slide, please? Kami, is it okay if I call you by your first name in public?
Absolutely, yes, may.
Please do the same. Whoa, just one slide. So um, I can never do this calculation in my head, but uh, two degrees centigrade, that's like what, four and a half degrees?
Yeah, it, yes, it's, it's uh thereabouts. Yeah, it, it'll, I can, I not, I don't do it in my head either. It's like nine fifths of whatever, but yes, you're, you're looking at um, you know. Yes, I'll just leave it at that.
And your forest cover is almost entirely um, like there's almost no pine which, or, or madrone which suffers so terribly. Um, from even these slight temperature increases. Or there's very little, it's, it's almost all dog fur and red cedar in, in your canopy.
Yes, yes, with, with a little bit of others, yes, but it's, it's mostly uh dog fur.
It, it likes to happen. Um, okay, uh, that, that was, uh, so the firm yield update obviously has nothing to do with um. What they like to call a rain event instead of a rainstorm, which is perfectly good words. It's, so it doesn't have anything to do with. Um, heavy individual events, it's just total.
That's correct, when you're look, that's right, so we would have captured that like in, in the inflow to the reservoir. What we're finding is that, yes, the rainfall is certainly gonna fall in a different manner, right? We're gonna get those heavy events you talked about. We've already started to see a little bit of change. Um, but overall, we're looking at total amount filling the reservoir. Uh, we're still gonna, it appears we should get the amount we need uh to continue to fill it. Um, and, and uh, so that's good news, but you know, climate change predictions are. Projections only, and that's why we'll keep an eye on it and continue to gather data and every ten years we'll take another look. See where we're at.
Thank you very much for the good news on this one. Let us be hopeful that there will be upcoming good news in your other items. So the iron and manganese evaluation, please take it away. Thank you.
Okay, so iron and manganese, now we're looking at our, our sources and within our water system. Uh, why, why are we concerned about iron and manganese? Um, iron and manganese currently are regulated only as what we call secondary contaminants. And that means that they're, they haven't done enough research yet to determine exactly if there's health effects associated with that. We just know that it's, it's kind of the, the unpleasant ones like taste and smell. It's not necessarily bad for your health. Um, uh, so they're regulated at this point as secondary contaminants. However, there is growing research about potential health effects. From uh manganese in particular, uh, so uh. E P A required manganese sampling in public water systems as part of U C M R fourteen, that's. U C M R is unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. It just for every five years, E P A has to identify potential. Uh, contaminants that may be present in a water system um that isn't yet regulated. Uh, they require us to do sampling, then they do some more research if they determine there's enough presence and it is. There's enough evidence of health impacts, then they may move into rulemaking. And, and establish uh regulation controlling a particular contaminant, so as part of that. The fourth cycle of that process, um, manganese was uh measured in water systems. And we're anticipating out of that, in the very near future, E P A will have increasing stringent. More stringent regulation around manganese, so we're anticipating that it's looking that that is highly probable to come. Additionally, iron and manganese, there are other metals of health concern like arsenic, cadmium and lead that tend to. Stick to iron and manganese uh particles, either sediment or scale within the system. Uh, so if you, if you see that you're getting accumulations of iron and manganese, there's a risk you might be also accumulating. Uh, some of these other metals that are, are definitely already of health concern. Um, and then let me see if I can move this. Uh, new drinking water uh source, any new drinking water sources, so if we were to drill a new well. Um, that would be considered a new source. If it exceeds the secondary M C L, we are required at that point to install treatment on it. And for existing sources that exceed that secondary M C L, uh, they may be required to add treatment if the community demands it. So that's, those are things that are in the regulations already, that exists already. And then what I didn't list on here, I realized as I was reviewing this today, I left off one piece because I was so focused on the health. Um, but iron and manganese is also problematic operationally within the system as far as. Uh, it takes its toll on our pumps and motors. Um, and especially iron can cause iron rust bacteria to, to clog up our well screens. So there are operational reasons why we need to manage iron and manganese as well. So what did we find in our preliminary findings? We found that uh the Union River, our surface water source and wells in the Twin Lakes area. Um, they don't appear to be significant sources of iron and manganese. They don't appear to be uh. Loading the system in any way. Uh, the east side wells thirteen and fourteen do appear to be sources of manganese, iron and manganese. Um, in Anderson Creek Wells, um, some of the wells may be sources as well. We need to do more monitoring there. That one was when we were trying to gather samples, that was a little challenging because some of those, those wells are not running all the time. Um, and so we tried to, you know, work within our operational uh constraints there. So we need to do a little bit more monitoring there, but early results, some of the wells do appear to potentially be sources. And then um, the Anderson Creek Wells, we also had small detections in ammonia. From all the wells. Now ammonia in groundwater, it can be naturally occurring. Um, and uh, they're due to biological processes, the breakdown of nitrogen through biological processes, so we're not, we're not. Thinking that this was a contamination event in any phase. They're very, very, very low levels, not of a health risk at all. Um, the reason why we're concerned about ammonia, though, is it does um eat up chlorine and when we try to put chlorine into our system. Um, the ammonia has a chlorine demand, and so we wanna make, just make sure that we are. Uh, going beyond what they call the breakpoint, which is we're giving the ammonia and other organics enough chlorine. And putting it extra in there that we're still getting the residual we need to disinfect beyond that, so we just need to do a little work there. But uh, yeah, let me assure you, the ammonia levels, they're very, very, very low. And not of a health concern in any way, more indicative of your natural processes in an aquifer. Okay, um, then looking within the distribution system, part of this project was actually collecting samples while our uh distribution crews were flushing. The system particularly in areas that they know just historically, maybe we've had clean um dirty water calls, you know, during flushing. Um, and areas that they just know that there tends to be more sediment accumulation. Um, so we would do some sampling during the flushing of those areas. And there is some evidence that we are accumulating sediments with um, with iron and manganese in those areas. Now, it's not dissolved in the water at that point, it's just accumulating as sediments. But it would have the potential during a high flow event or a change in the chemistry of the water in some way could resuspend. Those uh, those metals into the water, so we wanna make sure we're managing um, these accumulations, like not allowing them to accumulate um, to an extent. And then also we're seeing the same thing in our reservoir sediments. Um, the ones that we've been, as far as red, reservoir sediments, we try to sample opportunistically. Anytime we uh have to drain a reservoir or do some work inside the reservoir, we will collect sediment samples to look for these metals. But we certainly haven't sampled every single one. So there is some suggestion that yes, the sources do appear to be contributing to the accumulations in the distribution system. Um, and we should do some more work in that area. So what does that look like? Um, in the distribution system, the recommendation was to, to increase flushing in the accumulated accumulation areas downstream of those sources that were identified. Um, consider U D F flushing. U D F is just a much more sophisticated type of flushing, it's much more complex. You have to actually set up, shut off connections to homes temporarily. It's, it's much more complex than we normally would do.
Um, U D F to stand for?
Uh, uni directional flow, basically you shut all valves and you make the water go in one direction and one direction only. Um, and so it's, it's very effective, um, it's a much more intensive clean. Along with swabbing, and that's just what it sounds like, right? You just, you put a swab in there and, and swab it. Um, we could consider as a city doing that in any areas where we feel. You know, there's more accumulation and scale that we need to address. Um, but it's something that would have to be considered carefully because it comes with, like I said, it's much more complex. Um, and involves shutting off customer, customer access while we're doing it, so we'd have to be able to justify it, right? And then we already do what's called pigging. It looks like a big sponge that you put in and push through the pipe. But we continue pigging the eighteen inch transmission main from Kitsap uh to the Kitsap Lake area, that's a. That's a area that's prone to some of that sediment accumulation, so. And then for our sources, it's recommended that we do some manganese uh removal, especially on the, the east side and the Anderson Creek Well Field. Um, and uh, because the sources are, there, there is a, a target level that's been determined. Um, if you target this level and you, you wanna be below this level in your sources to prevent accumulation in your distribution system, it's not a health risk level. It's simply a source level. Um, and east side wells consistently exceed that level. Anderson Creek Wells, some of them appear to, again, we need to do some work, work on those. And then ammonia treatment at Anderson Creek Well Field. The ammonia treatment basically consists of. Chlorine treatment, the treatment we're already doing. We just need to uh determine how much. Chlorine is required to be able to feed all the organics and ammonia and have enough leftover to provide a residual in our distribution system to disinfect. So that takes us to our next steps and I wanted, because we will be bringing a contract. Uh, forward for approval to take these next steps. I wanted to bring this to your attention. So for manganese uh treatment pre-design, uh for manganese removal for east side wells thirteen and fourteen. Um, we need to do a, what's called like a bench test or pilot test study. Um, it's much more intensive than we've done now because it really determines what is the level of treatment based on your water chemistry. What is the level of treatment you need? What's the best technology uh to apply? Um, and they would also be, the consultant would be providing a preliminary treatment plant sighting analysis. And then as part of this project, also, or this next step, we'd be evaluating that ammonia impact into disinfection. Again, we'd be trying to get to what they call the breakpoint. So we'd be doing ammonia breakpoint testing of the Anderson Creek Wells, and that would tell us. You know, is our current level of hypochlorite uh injection sufficient? Uh, or do we need to add more at that location? And then uh, to develop an enhanced ongoing monitoring plan, so we can continue to monitor what's going on in our distribution system. Um, and again, gathering more of the data specifically on Anderson Creek Wells. Uh, so we could hopefully move into some kind of pre-design there at some point in the future. And then once we have that information available, we can update uh treatment facility estimates in our C I P. I think that was the last slide, yep. So any questions on that one before we move on?
Michael, do you have any questions?
Michael, do you have any questions? I'm gonna go with that's a no. Um.
That is the truth.
Okay, thank you. Um okay, so with the iron and manganese, um are we at levels where um? This remediation is currently mandated? Or are we being proactive here?
We're being proactive here. The only, like I said, the only thing, um I think it's back on, let me tell you which slide it was on. Uh that I mentioned that. Some of the, if we were to drill a new source, when we drill, in fact, we're drilling replacement wells right now for well seven and well nine. When we test those new sources, if the iron and manganese exceed the secondary MCL that I talked about, that's already in place. Then we will be required to add treatment. For our existing uh wells. Um it's it's up to the public. If the public was to come forward, if they're particularly concerned about a a particular area. Um and they insist that we do some treatment in those areas uh for existing sources that exceed the MCL. Uh DOH would um require us to do so.
Yeah, how would the public know? How would the public learn that?
Usually you would see that. I can, I can do a comparison. In our system, we do have a few areas where we tend to get more dirty water calls, but. Compared to, for instance, where I live in Paul's Bow, um our water is fairly clean. Paul's Bow had some significant iron and manganese accumulation in the pipes. There were a lot of, they were being overwhelmed with dirty water calls. Year round. Um and the public, of course, it's it's unpleasant, right? You get iron staining on your fixtures. Um the smell, the taste isn't, uh you know, and their levels, their source levels, which are much higher than our source levels. Um those are getting into areas that more recent research indicates may be of health concern. And so the public said, we want you to take care of this. And so the city moved ahead and they have uh put in. Um manganese, iron and manganese removal um on their wells, most of their wells. In fact. Um we were able to tour one of their ATEC systems, which is an iron and manganese removal system. We were able to tour their facility and get an idea of, you know, learn, lessons learned, right? We get to pick their brains on, um you know. What they would do different or, you know, what was particularly challenging or what worked well. Um and it was very interesting, but.
So they would see it and smell it and and call and complain.
And taste it.
That's how they would, that's how they would find out that there was iron and manganese.
Yeah, yep.
On the phone. Okay, um and. The cadmium and lead and I forget what the other one was that uh. I'm gonna assume from like old boats on the reservoir using lead-based gasoline.
No, you know, you can get the, all of those actually can occur naturally in nature, right? And and what we're seeing in the sediments, where I want to make a distinction here too, that what we're seeing in the sediments is not. Indicative of what's actually in the water that is being delivered. This is what settles out of the water. What it does say though is, you know, if you get a high flow event and you resuspend it, you could be delivering that. Um and and it's just indicative that you have it in your source water. And if it's at a certain level, you should treat for it. So it's just not accumulating in your distributions. But we. Uh the levels were were not of the level of concern. Nowhere near like you would see in a, you know, a contaminated site that was required for cleanup or anything of that nature. So.
So they're basically background levels mu- more or less?
Yes, yep.
Um I I really commend you on um imagining the worst case scenario and and preparing for it. It's it's very, not something that we humans like to do, so.
No, and it's, what's it, you know, the, I'm trying to put us in a position where we have. Uh a design ready to go to take advantage of any upcoming, uh you know, grant funding or, you know, that would be available. Usually when these rules are put into place, um initially there's some kind of uh grant funding available. But you have to be, you know, has to be, what do they call shovel ready? Uh you have to have it designed and ready to go. Uh so I'd like to get to the point where we have this stuff designed and ready to go.
Okay, um please proceed with the next one. I'm gonna make my screen dark, but I will be right here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so the next project is a project that um that we're a year behind on. There's been a one-year delay on this. Um basically because our first, let me, let's see, when we first put out uh an RFP. Uh request for proposal and qualifications, we only got one response. Um and it was actually, the proposal was an energy savings performance contracting project. Um it was much more complex and comprehensive than we really needed for just a basic feasibility study. But we tried to make it work. We tried to explore and say, well, can we get a feasibility study out of this? Um and it just wasn't, it wasn't working well. Um in fact, the the. Um the consultant who was managing it really didn't have any direct experience with um. Inline hydroelectric generation and water systems. Um and they were pushing to find a subcontractor who was. So um after uh after several months of grappling with it, we decided, you know, let's just. Send this back out and try to actually target. Um we did a lot of research during that time and tried to target, identifying target firms that had extensive microhydrogeneration expertise. And experience. Um we also reached out to several of our other utilities in the area that had experience. Uh and again, lessons learned, just trying to gather information from them, who they used, who they'd recommend, we go use to do this. And so we sent the RFQ or RFPQ back out again and we're, uh the proposal due date is March thirteenth. So we're hoping now, uh and this time we've targeted some, like I said, some specific firms that this is what they do. This is all they do. Uh you know, such as inline energy, in-pipe energy, uh Canyon Hydro. Uh rippling engineering laboratories. We we basically started looking nationwide at this point, but we really wanted to get the right people to do the job. Uh so far, um we've had several of them um reach back out to us with more questions, expressing interest. So. We're hopeful we'll get um some some good proposals this time around. And then we can move forward with this. What we're looking at here is uh two things, two broad categories. We're looking at what's the feasibility of generating. Hydroelectricity um. Near the dam and the intake works. Um to take advantage of that, you know, all the way down to the UV plant, to take advantage of that head, that's available, that pressure that's available. We're also looking within the distribution system at um. At pressure control or pressure regulating sites to see if there's some potential energy there when we're either increasing or reducing pressure. Uh can we capture that, that potential energy and convert it into electricity um and help. Offset the costs of running up that particular pump station or um that particular facility. So that's, that's what we're looking at with this feasibility study. So we're hoping to have something really interesting to share with you by this time next year. On that area. So that's really the status of that one. Any questions before I move on?
None for me?
Um this would be, would there be a grid need to be constructed to transfer the energy from the hydro generation? Site to the relative, to the respective pump stations?
Uh well, um so maybe at the dam, they might be looking at that. Um but it really is gonna have to pencil out, right? We have to be able to, if you were gonna do a grid or try to tap into, for instance, Puget Sound Energy's grid. Uh which is normally what you would do. Instead of building your own grid, you normally would tap in, right, to the bigger grid. Um it really, it has to pay off. That's a lot of capital infrastructure investment. Um so it has to pencil out. How much can you produce and will that pay for the cost of the capital investment? So that will be looked at. Um the inline is a little bit more straightforward. You can just, it's basically just um, you know, at each individual um. Control valve location. Some of it is just basically done through a bypass right within line. So you don't have to do any major capital investment there. So it has more potential to pay off. Um you know, yep.
Thank you.
All of that will be evaluated and shared in the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, are we ready to move on to the last one? Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, this one's gonna be short and sweet too. Uh water system plan update. Um this is a project that's been delayed. A couple of years for multiple reasons, but I'm happy to share. Well, first let me explain again. Um water system planning that is required by the Washington Administrative Code. Uh we must have a management plan and it must be updated every, at least every ten years. Um at the same time, we also have to update our water use efficiency plan and establish a new goal. Um and all of that is required to go through public process. So those two are done simultaneously. Um and they will go through the same public process. I also want to share that um. Our own municipal code, chapter fifteen says a plan, the plan must be approved by the mayor and adopted by city council. So we did submit a draft water system plan uh back in act, early October to the Department of Health. Um a call, we, they also provide copies to ecology, Kitsap Public Health, which is the local health district. Um Kitsap County and City Planning Departments and adjacent, all adjacent water purveyors. And uh also that I submitted, um I provided it to internal staff as well for review and comment. Um we did not receive any comments as of yet from Kitsap Public Health or adjacent water purveyors. Um the initial deadline I gave them was the end of January, so. Um although I will take them up until the very end, uh we have not received any comments as of yet. Both the county and the city planning departments provided what's called consistency determinations. That is a requirement of the water system planning. This is to make sure that our water system plan is consistent. With all of our other comprehensive planning under the Growth Management Act. And so the planning departments make sure, the reason why it's provided to the county as well, part of our service area lies in Kitsap County. So we have to get consistency from Kitsap County as well as our own planning department. We've received those. Uh SEPA, our SEPA application has been reviewed and the city issued a determination of nonsignificance. Uh the the comment period ends this week on on that. And then DOH and Ecology both requested an additional ninety day comment period. They start by by WAC. They have ninety days for review. If they want to extend beyond that, they have to request it of us. We received a request that they said they needed another ninety days for comment. Um I I approve that and because it is. The plan itself is not that big, but all of the updated plans and associated documents that are appendices to that plan. Make it a very large document. Uh and so um they were gracious enough not to press us too hard for being behind on our supplemental. So I gave them the additional ninety days to review. Uh so we're expecting to have comments from the state agencies by April eleventh. Okay, and so what's to come? We will address all the comments and resolve all the comments on the draft plan. We will be soliciting public comment on our proposed new water use efficiency goal. Um and then we will be submitting the final plan and the water use efficiency goal to council for adoption. So we're looking at that to happen. Uh if all goes well and all goes according to plan, we're looking around July timeframe. That we will be bringing um the draft plan and goal to the council for adoption. All right, and that's all I have. Are there any questions on that one?
Uh done for me.
Um. Always really love the bear.
I know, that's my favorite one. I put it on everything.
I know, I love that you do that. Um in the previous slide. You can stay on the bear, no worries.
Yep.
Um you're you're soliciting public comment. Um how are you going to do that? What's the?
So what was done in the past and worked very well, and I intend to repeat this time around, is we send out um. We send out a survey to uh to customers. Uh through their billing, we send a link to the online survey so they could fill it out online. We will, the week before it goes to council, we will also have a a kiosk set up outside of the billing office. So customers come in and can see, they can get information on our water use efficiency plan and our proposed goal. And they can fill out the survey or just submit written comments to us directly in response to that. So then we will consider their comments on that. And and provide you a, an overview of the survey results when we bring it to you for your review.
Hang on, my, I'm so sorry, my pen just ran out of ink. Um. Okay.
There are also, as part of that, you know, where there's a whole, the public process, when I say a public process is or is required, we're also. Required to document and provide documentation of the public process. So um there will be um. Announcements going out in the newspaper uh that this process is going on and where to get more information and how to participate in the survey. Um via the website, via our social media. Um we'll be blanketing and trying to reach as many customers as we can to get feedback.
Uh that sounds like a really admirable public comment process and you can be certain that you're getting people from. Bremerton if you're putting an insert in the water bill.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. Um. My only other question is, did the bear hang that flagging?
I don't know. I'm guessing not. I'm guessing not. I'm gonna guess that flagging was left over from uh some uh survey. That was done by our own staff. Yeah, that's cute.
Yeah, because I mean, that would be a clear violation of union rules. Um yeah, kind of the, um. Okay, um thank you very much for this update. Um. Michael, just asking a second time, do you have any questions on any of this?
No.
Okey dokey. Um thank you very much, Kami, and uh go forth and be rested.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, um. Tom, Ned, do you have anything further? Yeah, Ned, please go ahead.
So uh we've got a vacation that's coming up for the end of Ninth Street. Um kind of above where the roundabout is gonna go uh at the end of the Minette Bridge there, the Eleventh and Washington Project. Um it's associated with like a second phase of the spyglass um development. So it's up above, you know, there's an alley that comes off on Ninth Street uh and. They want to vacate the portion that goes from where the alley is down to Washington, so they can utilize that for their access. For the parking garage coming out of that uh building. So it's something that engineering has had in our hands for. I think like three years trying to figure out what the right answers were. We just had a meeting with the developer today. Um we're trying to get this vacation done so that um any work that they've got to do. Uh they have a better shot of coordinating, coordinating that with our construction that's gonna occur. So um it comes to council like four times. It goes through two council cycles for a vacation. But if we can get our ducks in a row, we're gonna try to bring it before the next public works committee. So you won't be seeing it at public works committee. Um but you'll see it through the normal council cycle. So I just want to let you know that was coming and um. I think we're making good progress on it, but you're not gonna see it at a public works committee meeting before we bring it forward, I don't think.
Okay, um Michael, do you have any comments?
Uh no, not on that. I do have, this is a little bit of a not personal, but hey, so I might have. This is about the Roxy. Uh we might need uh to change um. You know, our water service and obviously I know that. There's, you know, with the street, how how would we best coordinate with public works or how would anybody best public? Coordinate with you guys uh if they were gonna try to get some work done at the same time you guys were. You know, obviously we don't want to do.
When you say your water service, do you mean your domestic service? Are you talking about like a fire sprinkler line or something?
Oh, we don't even have that yet. So that's a good, that's a good idea ahead of. Um you know, to be quite honest, when we have an intermission and they flush all the toilets. The water pretty much stops running while everything fills. And then, of course, everything fills slowly. So. Um granted, we're also checking our internal piping and things like that, but I I think we have a two-inch service. Anyways, I'm gonna have a conversation about somebody else.
You have a two-inch service and you flush toilets all at the same time and they fill slowly?
Yeah, so that sounds like it could be inside the building.
Yeah, it sounds like you've probably got a galvanized water line with a bunch of debrogulation. So you got it. Now like a.
Yeah, we've got some copper, uh but I had um. Oh, Brendan Hurst and Joe Butcher out here today for our, for inspections. And uh I was talking to them about it. We just kind of started thinking about that, so.
You gotta be able to do a flow test to try to get. What kind of capacity you got in the system pretty easily. Yeah, they pull the meter and then they do a flow, put a new meter on it. And I. It would surprise me that you have a two-inch, but maybe I might have to look at the.
That's what uh one of the guys told me. He said.
Okay.
But um so is that something like I can contact the office there, talk to Hillary or somebody like, or who's? Who do I reach out to then? To the flow test?
I, you could probably, I mean, Tom, you want to answer that? I think you could probably call customer response.
Yeah.
And then Hillary's gonna work with Chris to like. Then Hillary's going to work with Chris to like vet the, is that how that works, Hillary?
If you're talking to Joe Butcher or or Chris Smith, right? If you're talking to Chris Smith, have you talked to him yet?
I don't think so. I've not talked to him about this, so.
I would, so Hillary, does do you call it in as a customer response? And then you dispatch Chris to figure out if there's a problem with the service line. And then if it's, I mean, he's going to need help if it's a flow test on a two inch. But I think that's what I would do. Then you get it logged in. And then we can start figuring out what kind of a problem you have. And then if we, if there is a replacement required, then. Yeah, the right time to do it is either before or during the construction that's going to go on, right?
Yeah.
Excellent. So I'm sure you guys can work all this out. Everybody feels confident about that. I'm going to go back to the vacation of the street. You know, before we move on to anything else. So is this a public right of way at this time and it's going to become a private right of way?
It won't necessarily become a private right away. It will be vacated and will become private property. And then we have a lot of right away there. The one thing, there's a couple of. They're not conflicts, but there's a power line and a lot of comm conduit and a pole that needs to be relocated in underground, which the developer is going to do. And then there's an existing stairway from Ninth Street down to the street level. And they're going to want to remove the stairway and relocate it to the north about thirty feet. Which will still be in right away, but they'd be, we'd be vacating the street end to accommodate their construction. And then they'd be building a new stairway down, which would be in the right of way that's remaining.
So the public access would be maintained?
There might be a gap in the access, like they've got to remove it, they've got to remove a stairway and put in a new stairway in there. But yeah, they will maintain, the plan is to maintain that stairway access from, you know, Ninth Street down to Washington.
So like on planning documents, et cetera, this is shown as a street, but in actuality, it's a staircase.
It's a staircase and a slope. Yes.
Okay. And they will remain public?
It will become private property where the existing staircase and the existing right of way is for the street end. And then they'll relocate the stairway and it'll be in right of way, but they'll relocate it to the north. I don't have a good exhibit to show you. I'm not sure I'm explaining it very well, but.
No, you're you're, it's like on this one side, the public area is going to become private. But then they're going to take this other area to the north and make it public.
It is public and they will just be putting a new stairway in it.
Okay, so the amount of public will be reduced.
Yes, and they'll have to pay for that.
That was, I was hoping to get to that point. Yes. Okay, so paying for it, that's really good, but I guess the. The restrictions on the public use was my concern and honest to gosh, Ned, you have addressed it.
Okay, the nice thing is hopefully if they can underground underground this power and these columns and get rid of this pole. It's just an eyesore on the slope. Right now, PSC actually proposed spanning across Washington with a new span wire for power. And we're trying to go the other way, right? So but the undergrounding and the power pole removal would be on the developer when they do that work. To develop that area.
Okay. Did, Michael, just, you know, I'm deferring to you. Do you have any further questions? I'm so sorry. Thank you, Ned. Michael, do you have any further questions other than like permitting me to really admire? This whole Benedictine. Brandy making look.
I'm all, oh, you like it?
I really do.
I'm good.
At any moment, I expect to see you offer me fine cognac. Did you have anything further? Okay, I was wondering, be- before we close, I'm so sorry, Tom. Did you have anything further?
No.
Okay. Before we close, I was wondering if you have. Hang about. The the maps of what's going to be done with pavement management. Preservation and markings maintenance in the year twenty twenty three. I know you're doing the third phase of Belfair Valley Road that's listed on the mayor's initiatives. But do you have the just the map of where it's going to be? So that all of us on council can say. We are eighty percent sure because we don't want to get stronger than that. That these improvements will be coming to your neighborhood soon.
So we have, and I thought I sent an email out on this, maybe maybe it wasn't clear, but. We we have the work that was planned to be done, the the chip seal work that was planned to be done in twenty twenty two. That I think I've already put out and I believe actually that one's online as well. And engineering staff, that 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 twenty twenty two work was delayed because we bid the project kind of late in the year. And the contractor was worried about weather. And so he requested. Twenty twenty three and we we agreed that that was a good approach. So.
Stripe, right? They ran into trouble. They ran into weather.
It's a different contractor, but yeah, that's.
Oh, okay. Sorry, my bad.
And then the the engineering is is finishing up. Putting together the the street list that would be the full twenty twenty three scope. Which is, you know, twice, it's like, I think about one point two million, I want to say. Worth of work and and it's about double what was projected for twenty twenty two. So for our, per our work plan, they're supposed to be developing that right now, which they're doing. And as soon as they have that done, we'll go ahead and make sure that it gets to the public works committee and they will also get it online. So the public can see it, but they're still working on it. I think it's pretty close.
I absolutely. It's always a bad idea to show clients things in draft. They never get it. But once it's ready for internal distribution, I think all of us on public works would be very happy to see it.
Yep, that's the plan. I don't think you, you, you might have missed what was presented at council last week. But engineering put together a really nice graphic that listed out, I think it was, what was it, Ned? Like the last five years worth of complete street improvement. So it's a list of going back to, I want to say twenty eighteen. So all the curb ramps, all the sidewalk infill, all of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. All the green paint, all of the pedestrian hybrid beacons, all of those improvements. Was put on one map. That showed not only what's been completed, but what's under construction. And that was part of the mayor's report for last Wednesday. Kind of a nice graphic, actually. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Did you see that? Did you see that?
I know, in my, in my own defense, I was in Olympia with the Association of Washington Cities.
Yeah.
My computer decided that it could not get email and it could not connect to Zoom. But also I was like out there meeting with people for the View Ridge Safe Roots to School money. And also really pressing hard for more money from the Inflation Reduction Act. For sidewalks and walkable streets, including crosswalk markings. So really that was. Of the team of us that were down there, my pitch was pretty much all about public works.
Do you want to share it, Tom?
That'd be awesome, Ned. Thanks.
I gotta figure out how to share. Oh, here, go share a screen.
I'd love to see this graphic.
Let me know if you see it.
Ooh. Okay.
So this is, this is the last five years, right? So we've been, we've been. We have other improvements, like Lebo Boulevard doesn't show up on this, but but this is the last five years. Go ahead, Ned.
Well, I was just looking like here's the completed projects that are in progress. Bike and pad completed, bike and pad in progress. Pedestrian accessibility improvement, which could be an RFB or just like ADA ramp. So those are in progress or completed, so.
Can you just zoom in? Sorry, I'm pointing at the computer as though that was going to help you. Can you zoom in on my district like right where you're, yeah, can you just clunk on on that? So that solid yellow line, that's Valde, no?
Yep.
Okay, and the blockity blockity yellow.
Is that Snyder?
That's the, that's the, yeah, that is Snyder and that's the sidewalk that the street crew is. Constructing this year, I think it's, I want to say it's a thousand feet.
Yeah, that was on the Capitol projects that that Hillary sent out. Yeah. Okay, so that was nice for Valde. I mean, they had sidewalks and now they have better sidewalks rocking. You know, what can I tell you? I I think about my district. How can I get a copy of these beautiful things other than by watching Bcat?
It's online now, isn't it?
It should be online.
On the website.
Can you?
There, I could email.
How do I get to it? Like if I were just.
To get to it, but I'm going to just forward it to you and.
Okay, because one of the things is I'd like to make sure that. I can tell my constituents and anybody else who asks, here's how you find out what's going to happen. So if you can tell me how I could find that from the homepage of the city website. That'd be spiffy.
So you you would just, I keep wanting to call it Google, but City of Bremerton's construction projects. And then they're all listed there. You just kind of flip through them.
Search in the search bar for complete streets, it'll come up, I have to think.
Yep.
Complete streets, but if a person wanted to know like what kind of work's going to happen in my neighborhood, they could click on. Complete streets and.
No, that that's not, that doesn't exist yet, but that's, that's a work that engineering has committed to completing. This year.
So I'm going to forward you this internal email that has these two documents attached. One is the version from twenty sixteen. And one is the version from twenty eighteen, which covers the mayor's term. So there's two maps and that's the difference. One just goes back two years further. So.
That's looking backward, looking forward, though. There's two work products that engineering is going to be working on, but I got to tell you. We we are, we still haven't got applicants for positions. That transportation capital program manager. Haven't gotten an applicant yet. You know, our our work delivery is really predicated on having staff to do the work. So, I mean, that's just how it is, right? But our plan is to complete the both the paving plan, which will include a five year. You know, a prioritization, but then a five year plan, the same thing with with the pedestrian improvements. And then have that available. By the end of the year, we're delivering it with the comp plan, so.
Every single thing that you say, Tom, the entire back of my brain is going. It is really, really, really hard to find staff right now. Everywhere I go.
Never seen anything like it. Very frustrating.
It 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 really, yeah. It's and it's frustrating at every single level of everything I think all of us do all day. I mean, like. Everything. You know, like trying to buy pet food, for example, it's like staff is out, staff isn't there. They, you know, moved up, they've gone to Seattle, they're getting twice the money, whatever it is. Or they want to live somewhere that has a reliable ferry. So honest to gosh, I I really, really, truly do get that. Okay. If when if and when you come up with public works and all the others, but you. Sorry, I'm getting starving now. When you figure out like how a method by which ordinary people could just go to the website and go. Here's the work that's going to happen in my neighborhood. I I would love to see it. And if there's a way that council can be of use. In making that happen, making city actions more transparent to city residents. Please let me know or us know.
We will absolutely be bringing that through public works committee as that plan is is developed and finalized. Absolutely.
Excellent. I will kick in five dollars of my own money for it. Okay, does anyone else have anything further before we let everyone go home? Okay. Happy birthday to Tom. Happy birthday to Tom. Happy birthday to Tom. We envy you so.
Birthday, Tom. We recorded this, right?
Oh, God, please, no.
Oh, no.
I'll be playing this for all the staff, Tom. Special public works managers meeting. And I will play this for them so that they know we celebrated you properly.
I hope you sing along, Ned. I hope you sing along.
Alright, goodnight, guys.
Have a good night. Thank you all very much.
Goodnight.
Good night.